I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission, November 28th, 2023, meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a full quorum. First item of businesses approve the meeting minutes from the October 30th, 2023 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item number two is our public comment period. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? I didn't see any signatures on the sign. So we will continue on. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Logan. So items three, four, five, and six have been deferred and item seven has been withdrawn?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Perfect. We will move on to item number eight. Site plan, Site Pro Rentals LLC, new building of 11,717 square feet on 4.14 acres, requested by Bowler, Inc., property located at 425 Industrial Boulevard, tax map 14, part of parcel five, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Site Pro Rentals LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So on behalf of their client, Bowler is requesting site plan approval for this site, which is part of a proposed building at 425 Industrial. The new building is planned to be one-story and the total lot size is 4.14 acres. So if you look at the screen right now, you can see the site that's under this proposal. So it's the triangular site there that's covered with gravel. Other than that, the site is vacant right now. And a little bit wider view, and you can see the High Point 24 comes into view there to the south and west. And then, of course, this site's very close to I-24, basically sits right on the interstate. And the zoning map, you can see this dark blue color is heavy industrial zoning, which is I-2. And again, the triangle outlined in the lighter blue is the site. So getting on to the photos. Again, this site is vacant. It's just covered in gravel and a lot of industrial buildings surrounding it. There is some fencing right now on the site that's chain link, and we'll cover the fencing a little bit later. So for the staff comments, the planning section, there's just a note that they did request to pay the fee in lieu of sidewalk. And they should also go over the fencing details. At this time, they're proposing some more ornamental type fencing for the front, but they're still showing the chain link fence on the sides, part of the sides and the rear. So that may be a discussion item. And other than that, I think the rest of the comments are from utilities and engineering. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Lott. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
There are no actual outstanding comments. They've addressed them all. We provided some items here just for information. One is that the fee in lieu of front walk amount is $40,800. One thing Bo pointed out about the fence, their architectural plans show that the dumpster screen is painted CMU walls with a double swing metal gate. The next thing, they have contacted Walker Trailer. Walker Trailer is at the present time not immediately interested in connecting to city sewer. Their septic tank is working fine, so the applicant is pursuing continuing forward as a single tie-in, which is acceptable. On sheet C 602, their proposed force main does leave the right-of-way and goes across a piece of property, so we're notifying them that they are completely responsible for getting that easement. And that's about it. Those are all just for information item only. We have no outstanding comments negative about this plan.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative here this evening for this project? Name and address for the record, gentlemen.
Kevin Eeks with Bowler Engineering, 209 10th Avenue South, Suite 534, Nashville, Tennessee.
Very good. And we'll start with the fencing, since Mr. Logan mentioned that. Ornamental up front, black vinyl coated in the rear.
It's a black wrought iron in the front and then chain link side and rear is what we're proposing.
How's the board about that?
Did we mention vinyl coated?
Right.
I know that's what we've asked other groups to do is the black, for chain link, do black vinyl coated. So, but I mean, that's usually whenever they're doing that all the way around. This is up front wrought iron. I don't mind having the back. And that long side, I would just think the shorter side, which is more visible to the street.
And the wrought iron?
I would think if that's possible.
We can make that happen.
Everyone else across the board? That's it? Very good.
So chain link along the Prologis side and then, okay.
Solid chain link.
And the other point of contention was fee in lieu.
You okay with the fee in lieu total number?
Board's final?
I will ask, is it a topography issue for not wanting to do sidewalks or what is it?
There's topography and utilities. There's some existing utilities that would be right in the way of the sidewalk, and it's very sloped right on that edge of industrial.
Okay.
It'd be very difficult to get a sidewalk in that portion.
If I'm not mistaken, the only sidewalks nearby would be like BJ's.
Right.
Pretty good distance away. Any other questions or comments? Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Our second.
Make a motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Item number nine. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for subdivision acceptance, Carruthers Crossing Phase One, property located off Carruthers Road, requested by SEC, Inc., R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
So this request is for subdivision acceptance at Carruthers Crossing, and this phase has approximately 92 lots. And it looks like two of those are commercial, the other 92 are residential because the development has some commercial property at the very front. So on the screen right now, you can see the photos. Most people call it Carruthers Crossing, but they did add the name Hamlet at Carruthers Crossing sometime in the last year. So here's another photo that shows all the construction that's going on out there. Another photo with a different view. So I'll go and turn it over to Mr. Lott for his part. Thanks.
Okay. Our deadline for submittal of this is Friday before, and at that time, they had one outstanding item. They have since addressed it, so there are no outstanding items.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? None, we will entertain a motion.
Make a motion for a favorable recommendation.
Motion for a favorable recommendation to the mayor and Alderman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number 10. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman Amendment to zoning ordinance, amend Article 4, Section 4.010, off-street parking requirements presented by Mr. Kyle Brown and Mr. Bo Logan. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So after the workshop and the input from you all at the workshop a couple of weeks ago, the parking table was updated with your all's comments. So I believe, I'll turn it over to Kyle, in case he wants to add anything.
Thank you, sir.
Basically, what the wording is, if you look in your packet, is pretty much all dwellings except a gated apartment complex with a minimum of 50 units is going to stick with the existing requirements, which is the three spaces. So all that stand the same. The only exception to that is a gated apartment complex with a minimum of 50 units. So it would fall then under the requirements of for each dwelling with one bedroom, you'd have 1.75 spaces required. And then for each dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms, it's 1.1 times the number of bedrooms. That's kind of where we ended up. I know there was discussion on that. If there is a change, we can easily do that if you want, would be the 1.75 piece. That's where someone talked about too. So we feel 1.75 should be sufficient.
Questions or comments?
I thought it was 1.5.
We were at one and a half, yes, but there was so much discussion at two, we put it at 1.75. But if anybody wants to make a motion, they can change it to 1.5, they can leave it as is, or if you want to go to, of course, they'll go to Mayor Alderman, and then they may think 1.5, that's where, just what everybody agrees on.
It's like a nice meet in the middle.
Yeah.
That's where we stopped, so.
Kind of a stickler at the two, but 1.75 is good, and especially with the gated line item here, I'm good at 1.75.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the mayor and Alderman to accept the ordinance as submitted.
Our second.
We have a motion to send a favorable recommendation with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We'll be sending a favorable recommendation. Item number 11. Update bond amount for Portico Place, Section 2, Phase 2, tax map 14, parcel 24, requested by SEC, Inc., PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
I'll go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Lott. Thanks.
Okay. Staff believes the bond amount meets subdivision regulation requirements.
Satisfied with those numbers, sir?
Yes.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Just got one comment. There's only one of the three have been signed, and we do normally like to have them signed.
Two. Two have been signed out of four. But yes, I agree with him, we're used to having them signed.
Apologies. Do you want to send it back to workshop so we get all three, everything signed correctly?
Is this bond currently up?
What's happened is the old bond, all of the proposals were out of date now. They were past their date of, they were required to maintain them, and they're about to resubmit their final plat. So if it got deferred to next month, it would be simultaneously with the final plat, so I don't think it would, Alces is in the audience, I don't think it would unduly hurt them in any way.
I'd make a motion to defer it for next month to get signed copies.
We have a motion to defer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We'll work on it next month. First item under new business, item number 12, has been deferred. Correct, Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you. Item number 13. Preliminary plat Arbor Ridge, Section 9B, 11, and 12, 121 lots on approximately 36 acres, requested by SEC, Inc., property located off Waldron Road, tax map 32, parcel 4.04, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Starlight Homes of Tennessee, LLC. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for preliminary plat approval at Arbor Ridge, and this is Section 9B, 11, and 12. On behalf of their applicant, SEC is requesting approval of this plat for Arbor Ridge to be located on approximately 36 acres. This property is located on the east side of Waldron Road in the southern part of the city. The purpose of this plat is to present the layout of the single-family development, and these phases together will consist of 121 lots. And you can see the property on the screen, outlined there in blue. So this is Rock Springs Elementary School with the white roof, and then this western edge of the property is actually Waldron Road, which runs north and south. And then the Blair Road intersection is right here where I'm pointing. So these sections are in the southern and southwest part of the entire parcel. You probably remember that whole acreage is about 214 acres, so it's very large, but this, these phases are just the southern and southwest parts of that 214 acres. So on the zoning map, this is all zoned PDR Plan Density Residential with the R1 base zoning, which is the orange. And here's some photos of the property. This is at the intersection of Lake Road and Waldron at the three-way stop. So the school's to your right in this photo. And the property straight ahead is roughly the area that's being developed. And then here's a second photo that shows the property. So again, this is just Sections 9B, 11, and 12. So in your packet, you've probably seen what was submitted by the applicant. If not, it's on the screen. This is the master plan that shows that entire 214 plus the commercial area at Blair Road, which is on the opposite side of Waldron, excuse me. So most of this is the east side, but the commercial section is the west side and then that corner. And then each of these is the detail sheets that shows the lot arrangement. And getting back to the report, there's no planning comments. Actually, it looks like there's not any comments from any department. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number 14, Mr. Logan has a withdrawn. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. The plat is withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you. So we will move on to item number 15.
I have a question on that. It was recorded, and I was talking about the survey that he delivered to you today, right?
Yes, sir. We brought it, actually. We brought it with us just in case anybody wanted to see it.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
The plat's withdrawn because the plat was here nine or 10 months ago and was never recorded, so it doesn't need to go back through this body. So it's been taken off the agenda. You're doing the site plan next.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to understand what's going on themselves.
We'll address it in a second, Mr. Rhodes. So item number 15, site plan, Osama Deuce Retail Center, building addition of 1,173 square feet, requested by Mr. Chet Rhodes, property located at 5130 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15M, Group A, parcel 1, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by TN Group Properties, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is the request for site plan approval at 5130 Murfreesboro Road, AKA the old car wash that's not far from City Hall. You can see the property on the screen there. This property, the car wash has been vacant most of the last three or four years. When this project first came to us about a year and a half ago, they were looking to redevelop the car wash and make it a retail center, but it was one large parcel. So if you know where Little Caesar's is, which is in this building that I'm pointing to, the Little Caesar's retail strip plus the car wash were on one large parcel, and that created a lot of problems for the applicant and staff. So it was decided at that time, the best thing to do was separate the car wash from the strip retail. So that was done officially this week at the Register of Deeds with that plat, and we have the plat in case anybody wants to see it. But it was recorded, and so now there's two separate lots, and that's why the map on the screen is not showing that, because it just got recorded, I believe, this morning? Yesterday afternoon? It was recorded yesterday afternoon. So everything was in order with that plat. The line was to the far side of Brewer Street so that Brewer was not owned by two different entities. So that's all good and in order. So moving along, here's some site photos. So this is Brewer Street in the foreground, and you're looking across at the retail center that holds Little Caesar's. So there's another photo here of the car wash, or the old car wash. So there's brick on that building, it has a metal roof, and of course, you see the existing bay doors. There's five of those. And so the plat was recorded, as I mentioned, no issues there. So we'll move on here. This is currently what's been submitted for the site plan. So you can see Brewer Street is, again, here, runs roughly north and south. So the car wash is to the east or southeast of Brewer Street, and the applicant is proposing to create a retail center there. They are doing an addition to the building. It's a small addition that's not very large, but they will be doing that as well in the future. So they are, it looks like the addition that they're proposing is 1,173 square feet. So that would bring the existing building up to about 4,200 square feet total with this site plan. They did also submit color elevations, and I'll show those to you. This is existing elevations, of course, with the doors, and then this is the updated elevations, which the applicant is proposing with this site plan. Other than that, it looks like there are some planning comments left. They will need to do materials board to show the samples and also the brick samples. They need the landscape plan, they need the photometric plan, and they need to make sure they've shown all utilities, and then the building setback lines should be shown on the site plan as well. And that completes the planning comments, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Lott. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So they will need a grading and drainage plan, particularly because they are two items. They're digging up the existing asphalt to put in the building addition, therefore, they're going to need an erosion and sediment control plan to protect the surrounding area during that period. And also, their proposed architectural plans show doorways on the back, so we need to see relative elevations from the doorway stoop to the ground so we can confirm ADA accessibility and IBC compliance. We do need stormwater calculations, even though it is replacing roof with driveway or paved area with roof. We concur with the engineer that detention calculations aren't needed, but our stormwater management ordinance does not tie quality calculations to pre versus post changes. It's not a delta thing. So since they are modifying, they need to improve the water quality. Boo, 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 boo. That was easy. The dumpster screen proposed is exposed CMU with a wooden gate. So that's for y'all's information. That's unimportant. And of course, the landscaping plan has not been provided. We therefore consider the submittal incomplete, and utilities serving the proposed building are not shown. Engineer's response that that's the utilities that are shown in the survey, which they were given, we consider inadequate, so we consider the submittal incomplete on that basis. Also, the codes comments really, we took those from y'all's comments last time. Sheet A 1.1 shows a restroom in the proposed section of the building, which they labeled as existing restroom, so I think it's in the wrong place. That same sheet shows the only access to that restroom being from the outside, not the interior. Y'all discussed that. It hasn't been changed. And then A 2.0, the elevation, shows an apparently unnecessary door on the front of the building, which y'all also discussed with them, and please confirm that is the intent for this door to remain. That's all of our comments.
Thank you very much. Do we have a representative here for this project? Name and address for the record, sir.
Chet Rhodes with Rhodes Engineering, 1117 Whitney Drive, Columbia, Tennessee, 38401.
Thank you, sir. It sounds as if there are quite a few items that need to be addressed on this.
It does sound that way. I heard what he said. The one thing that he said that really interested me is, we changed the bathroom floor plan so that you can only access the bathroom from inside the spaces, and you said that hadn't been changed. And I'm like, well, I want to see what he was looking at, because when, Monday, the 20th, we did submit that.
A 1.1, Bo, see? I was looking at those.
Changed, so that was 1120, 2022, and I don't know if you're looking at that set or something else, but a couple of comments you made, I knew we had addressed the items.
Okay. So I'm just trying to. That's what I was looking at right there.
Okay. And what's the date? I can't see that seal from here.
111723 is what's in my bag.
1117, that was the Friday before. Okay. Well, I specifically asked that be changed and sent to you, and I was out that week of Thanksgiving, so my staff had it printed and sent, so that could be an error on that end, but I heard you say that, and we took care of that, I thought, so we sent it back uncorrected, and that's on me. I'm sorry about that. So that was the first thing.
Okay. But also, this is an existing restroom, so it's probably right here rather than in the proposed section of the building.
Well, we're proposed, that's the final floor plan proposed. We're moving it a bit to that location, so.
Okay. So the word existing is confusing there.
We're not leaving it where it was.
Okay.
Because we're adding, we had to shift to make it work. We didn't want the restroom out in the middle of the space. We wanted it back against the wall. So that, I don't know why the door's still showing, it looks like it comes in from the outside, but I had that changed, and it's inexplicable. I don't know why it's not changed, so I heard you say that, I'm like, where is that? So we got that.
Mr. Rhodes. So obviously, there's a lot that needs to be corrected, and of no fault of your own, maybe staff on your end made a mistake, but our staff can only do what they're provided with.
Well, absolutely. I agree with that.
And we'll work through it. So, Mr. Logan, how many deferrals have we had on this item?
I believe this is the, it's not the third. I believe it's the second.
It doesn't count if we're in a firm business.
Mr. Chairman.
You know what? I miss Bo. Yeah, it's not the third or the second. This will be his first of all. It's under new business, so.
So.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, sir.
No, I agree with what you're saying. I wanted to point out two other things I wanted to get to and comment on. One was about the stormwater from this gentleman here, technical comments. We do have the pervious and impervious areas, pre and post on there, so you could see, you know, the conditions, and what I heard you say on your comments here is that we do need a road control plan.
Yes.
Because of the addition. I didn't have that opinion, that's why we didn't put it in there, but I heard you, we'll provide it.
Okay.
No problem. I just wanted to clear that up. But we were only adding like 1,100, 1,200 square feet to the building. The previous lot was completely paved. We thought it did not require a stormwater plan, and that's just where we were. But we heard his comments, we'll deal with them. Thank you.
Please note the quality, stormwater quality calculations for the extension, I need to see those. Detention, I agree with you, don't need them.
Well, we didn't provide any water quality, and we will, so.
Okay.
Based on your comment. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to defer this next month.
We have a motion to defer. Do we have a second? Mr. Mark, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We'll work on it at workshop. Item number 16. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by Kristen Rafique, 0.83 acres, property located at 512 and 516 Old Nashville Highway, tax map 18P, Group C, parcels 5 and 5.01, current zoning district R3, high-density residential zoning district, proposed zoning district C3, neighborhood service zoning district, property owned by Alicia Rafique. Mr. Logan? Property owned by Alicia Rafique. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. So this is a request for rezoning at Five Twelve and Five Sixteen Old Nashville Highway. And you can see the property there on the screen. This is at the corner of Cheney and Old Nashville Highway. And currently the lot on the corner has two mobile homes located on it. And then the second parcel has an existing home on it. So they are requesting to go from the current zoning, which is R3, high density. And the new zoning would be C3, which is Neighborhood Service, and that's a commercial zoning district. So moving on with the slides. So zooming out, you can see the much larger area with the Old Nashville quarter. And there are some commercial uses scattered all along Old Nashville. As you probably know, some of those are located just across the road and a little south of this property. And there is a larger of R3 across the road as well. So I'll just move down and show that in the zoning map. So this green color is, designates R3, which is high-density residential zoning. So you can see there's a really large area on both sides of Cheney. It's a lot of small parcels, so not real conducive for development from a large project standpoint. But there's just a lot of piecemeal parcels down that road that are zoned R3. So you can see the two parcels that we're looking at are right up here at Cheney and Old Nashville. So the property photos, that shows the two mobile homes. You sort of see in the background, this white is the mobile home that's farther to the back. And then this other photo. So this is, looks like it's taken from Old Nashville as well. So you can kind of see, it's hard in this photo, especially with winter time and it's dark all the time. But that is a mobile home where I'm pointing and then the white one is a little bit further down in the back. So getting on into the report. The main zoning in the area consists of R1, R2, and R3 with the scattered C2 commercial zoning along Old Nashville Highway. C3 exists at main intersections already, such as Jefferson Pike, which is not far from this site. So C3 is very appropriate for the intersections of the larger roads. And this is a very busy intersection, as you know. The property borders of site to southeast is R1 and property to the north is also R1. And C2 zoning exists almost directly across Old Nashville. And the applicant did submit just a rough, it is a diagram, but it's not official. They've not formally submitted. But you may have seen in the packet that they wanted you to see what they might possibly do if they were to be rezoned. So that's this image that's on the screen now. And these are just variations of strip-type retail. One is located further off of the road, further off Old Nashville. And the other one is right next to Old Nashville. So these are just offered for examples of what they might possibly do in the future. And that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just one question for Mr. Logan. Any phone calls on this rezoning from the sign?
No, sir. I haven't had any phone calls at all about it. Thanks.
With that, I'll make a motion for a favorable recommendation.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We'll be sending a favorable recommendation. And item number seventeen, bonds and letters of credit.
Hello, Chairman and Commissioners. For the first time in one year, you can actually see the bond list. It's bigger. There's just one expiring next month. I've already reached out to them and they are working on that. So besides that, everything should be good.
Very good. And thank you, ma'am. I would thank everybody for their time and hope everyone had wonderful holidays. Meeting adjourned.